With me for the pledge of allegiance. After the pledge, please remain standing will be led in prayer this evening by Chaplain Jeff Wolf of the Indianapolis International Airport Interfaith Chaplains.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Holy One, God, and Father, we thank you for being present with all who are here tonight. We thank you for the community of Greenwood and all who reside within it, especially those who serve this community, whether officials, town workers, and especially our first responders. Remind us to have a spirit of concern and compassion as the business of the town council proceeds to see me. Help us be servant leaders in everything that we do. Be also present with all attendees and all the residents of Greenwood, especially those experiencing difficult times or who are mourning. May they all feel your presence accomplished. Grant wisdom to the leaders of this meeting to know to and do what is right and good and true for the benefit of the community. May all who speak this evening show respect to everyone as they share concerns. May all who listen tonight have patience and discernment as concerns are shared. May everyone always be guided by the spirit of community and justice and understanding and compassion. We pray in the name of the Holy One and all that we hold good and right and true. Amen.
Thank you. May be seated. Roll call. Here.
Here.
Gibson.
Here.
Bill.
Here.
Popper.
Here.
Lexi.
Here.
Middleton.
Here.
Here. We have a board. Each of you should have received copies of the minutes for our last regular meeting of June 6th. Do you have a motion? Mr. Foster, second.
Second.
Mr. Lexi. Any additions, deletions, or corrections? You're not in roll call on the minutes.
Campbell.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Gibson.
Aye.
Aye.
Popper.
Aye.
Lexi.
Aye.
Middleton.
Aye.
Aye.
Minutes are approved with a vote of eight to zero. Reports, Corporation Council.
The identity monthly has been uploaded to SharePoint. Please contact the legal department and questions.
Right, you know, anything with a troll at this time?
Financials are available on the website. If you have any questions, please let me know.
All right, committee board reports. Any committee report reports? All of you should receive copies this afternoon of our report from the last RDC meeting. If you have any questions, just let me know. Any other committee or board reports? All right, so nothing moving on. This time, I'm gonna turn it over to the mayor.
Mr. President, council members, tonight we have the honor of bringing on one new firefighter and promoting two others. So this time, ladies and gentlemen, and especially for those of you who aren't here because of the fire department, it's a good time for you to be here. We take all of our city employees very serious. I like to think that we're all, not just employees of the city, but we're part of the family from the city. If you are family members of one of these firefighters getting sworn out or promoted tonight, thank you for giving them to us to take care of our city. We want to take each one of these people and train them up to be the best they can possibly be. We offer some of the best training in the state. We have some of the best public service employees in the state, no matter which department they're in. We want to bring them in, we want to train them, and we want to send them home better than when they came into work that day. And our promise to you as a family is we will take care of them while they're here. We also ask that while we're here, if you see a problem, if you know of any problems, feel free to call us, talk to us, let us know what's going on so that we can help each one of our people be better each and every day. With that, I will call up Nicholas Woods, please.
Richard, I want to hear from him. I'm Nicholas Woods. Having been appointed to the position of superintendent firefighter in the Greenwood Fire Department on May 23rd, 2022, swear that I will obey and enforce all the laws of the United States of the State of Indiana, the ordinances of the City of Greenwood and the rules and regulations of the Greenwood Fire Department. And I will obey all of the lawful orders of my superior officers. And I will faithfully discharge the duties of said office to the best of my ability. Congratulations.
It's a decision of the fire department to have a loved one pin the badge on the new member. So if you have someone to do that, they can come forward at this time. And it's harder than it looks. Good job. Congratulations.
I take a part.
Questions?
I take a part.
Having been appointed to the position of lieutenant for the Greenwood Fire Department
Having been appointed to the position of lieutenant for the Greenwood Fire Department
on May the 3rd, 2022,
On May the 3rd, 2022.
Swear that I will obey
Swear that I will obey
and enforce
And enforce
all the laws
Of all
of the United States
Of the United States
of the State of Indiana
State of Indiana
the ordinances of the City of Greenwood
ordinances of the City of Greenwood
and the rules and regulations of the Greenwood Fire Department
and the rules and regulations of the Greenwood Fire Department
and I will obey all the lawful orders
All the lawful orders
of my superior officers
of my superior officers
and faithfully discharge the duties
and faithfully discharge the duties
of said office
said office
to the best of my ability.
best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Lieutenant Hershey's life will end.
Gabriel Newman.
Richard Wright, I'm here.
I, Gabriel Newman.
I, Gabriel Newman.
Having been appointed to the position captain
Having been appointed to the position captain
of the Greenwood Fire Department
of the Greenwood Fire Department
on May the 2nd, 2022
on May the 2nd, 2022
swear that I will obey
swear that I will obey
and enforce
and enforce
all the laws
all the laws of the United States
of the United States of the State of Indiana
of the State of Indiana
the ordinances of the City of Greenwood
the ordinances of the City of Greenwood
and the rules and regulations of the Greenwood Fire Department
and the rules and regulations of the Greenwood Fire Department
and I will obey
and I will obey
all the lawful orders
all the lawful orders
of my superior officers
of my superior officers
and I will faithfully discharge the duties
and I will faithfully discharge the duties
of said office
of said office
to the best of my ability.
to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chief.
We will retire now and give you more.
I start saying, you all are welcome to stay, but I understand probably not. All right. This is the point in the agenda where the council sets aside opportunity for members of the audience to address the council concerning items that are on tonight's agenda. And there is a five-minute time limit per speaker and 20-minute time limit per topic, so I'm guessing most of you are here tonight to speak about or about ordinance 2215. So if you're here tonight and wish to speak concerning that, please step to the podium, state your name and address for the record. And again, there is a five-minute time limit per speaker.
Good evening. Good evening. 1157 Central Park Boulevard, South Greenwood, Indiana, 461. And I would like to talk first about 2215 for the reason. And before again, I do want to acknowledge that the representative and developer did reach out to the citizens and for me and myself and had talked with us, so I do appreciate that. Thank you. Regarding this development itself, as this council knows, we've been working for a very long time with that area in mind. And we were promised, I believe it was in 2020 or 2021, that there would be no more industrial development on the south side of Indianapolis by the leadership of the city. We did that because of what has happened out there on the north side of the property where we've seen all the warehousing that's gone on and all of the congestion that we're seeing getting to and from the interstate as well as many other fires. Our hope was to create communities in Worthville, on the Worthville corridor that were enjoyable with the city ballpark that is going out there by the interstate and accessible to those that live in the area. They were quiet and habitable and were a good investment for anyone who chose to live in our communities. These types of developments are only going to add to problems that we already face, which include the traffic, the noise, the light pollution. And we have to ask ourselves, what are the benefits of developing something like this versus the risk to the neighbors, the property values to the neighbors, and the safety of anyone who lives along the corridor? We've heard since, or at least I have heard since 2019, when I went through leadership council county from my board and the different ones about the housing needs in the state of Indiana, especially to the Donut Counties, the Long Bay County. This is still published in media, whether written or televised, about the needs. And yet, for some reason, we cannot seem to develop that area. But we can develop right to the north of that and just to the east of that. And when I go back searching, I have to ask myself, is this really a thing of no one is interested in the area? Or are we just fully trying to get the higher property value, which is industrial? Personally, I believe it's slap. I had to change my opinion prior to a few weeks ago where I was in support of this, but after doing research. And the reason that happened is I felt really bad with the Kelsey family having to hold this property all this time and knowing what they've gone through with their dairy business. But if you search the Kelsey family and their holding companies don't just own that property. They own several tracts of land throughout Johnson County and in other areas. They're not as financially hurting as I thought they were, and therefore I default it where I do stand against this. And all of my neighbors south of it, Central Park, and all the areas down through there will do the same. Resolution 2213 and 2214, that one I would like to see more detail on, but that runs into the same thing that I was just talking about where we were talking about no more industrial development on the south side of Worthville. Realize that is going to back up against railroad tracks. And some people say, well, you can't develop in there. Then I point you down to Push, is a Pushville Road, that's the south edge of the city line. And the development that's going in down near right next to the railroad tracks. There are better uses of the land in that area than to try and constantly develop warehouses, develop industry, commercial and residential. It should be what we are seeking to do there. This was supposed to be the gateway into the city. And I think it could be done much better than making it look like the East Street. I don't want Worthville to look like the East Street or as soon as you get off of it. And you head to the east, they see nothing but building after building after building. We are maybe again have problems with traffic. Watch our page, you can see the many people. I try not to stand before you to complain about it too much, because you've heard me for years. But the traffic already out there is, is almost unbearable. I live right off of the roundabout, it's amazing to know that at 2:00 AM, whenever a semi is coming off of there, even though we close, they can't get into break. They still do it, and they will still stand on their throttle when they're coming out. The motorcycles and cars are drag racing down Worthville Road now. And again, if we add more traffic, we're adding more danger and myself and the citizens.
Thank you, Randy.
our folks. Thank you.
David E. Byer, I live 3130 East 700 North Whiteland. I am here today to oppose the rezoning of this land to industrial use. If I can approach, I would like to show you what just happened today out in our neck of the woods on the east side of I-65 with another semi beating the Amazon FedEx area, cutting through Griffith Road and trying to get on Bain Street where it's clearly marked no semis. I understand that they do this, but it got caught, had to get pulled out. So this was just as of today.
Just give them the very good sending.
Thank you. I would like to talk about the negative effects on property value and issues of true positive reasons. Again, why we, east of I-65 homeowners are against the rezoning of this land for industrial uses. I have here, which I will present, this is the same, I have three copies. They're all the same. Pass them. Directly across the street, I call it 300 East, I believe over there, the developers calling it Five Points Road. They're the same road, directly east of the Kelsey land, right on 300 East. I have heard, I have sold three or excuse me, two two-acre tracks of ground for homeowners to build their dream home on. You're talking in the neighborhood of 500, 700,000 just for the house. And then the land was purchased to public record, two acres for $150,000 for the two acres of ground. I also have what you have, what I've just given you there is a mutual release. I have properties sold. I'm not going to mention the people's names, but it's there that you have as far as the purchasers. The sellers are in the, out here in the audience. And this deal was within one week of us closing and them starting to build their new home with Jeff West. And once they started to hear about, okay, we really can't give you any real clear definition as to what this land can be used for, when he talked with the planning director, he then backed out of the deal. So you got a $219,000 two-acre piece of ground with a barn on it that the sellers were unable to sell because of the threat of warehouses coming directly across the street. I believe there's another gentleman here by the name of Brian Smith that will be talking regarding his two acres of ground. Again, he, they're held in limbo because they don't know what to do with regards to building and then having warehouses. So this is kind of an expanded conversation. As far as right now, no industrial rezoning, and then we need to revisit this to give us homeowners east of I-65 some type of assurances that the City of Greenwood is going to do something better with this property that's going to be more harmonious to the current neighbors that are out there. Right now, we don't know if we want to put it in ground pools, if we want to add an additional two-car garage. We want to put a pole build, a pole barn up and spend the additional 50, $150,000 for these improvements to our home with not really knowing what this land is going to be used for. Some other things I think that the board needs to think about with the council, I should say, is who is the City of Greenwood going to be dealing with in the future? Is it really going to be Duke Realty? Or will it be this company, this billion-dollar company out of San Francisco? The most recent comprehensive map in 2020 shows all of this land as agricultural and/or residential or large residential. Nothing that the most new revised comprehension map says anything about industrial zoning. Based on that information, homeowners that purchased land, as I've just mentioned, on 300 East, Five Points Road,
You have one minute.
Thank you, directly across from this land, and they have decided not to build their tree homes. We currently have in place buffers of the new MI Home Neighborhood, Taylor's Market, the flood zone, and obviously Worthville Road itself, which gives us a nice buffer zone from the existing warehouses north of Worthville Road. Why is it every time that when this land comes up for rezoning, it's always for industrial uses? Obviously, if you were to give that type of zoning, then you could have manufacturing that's going to be going on in this particular land that's going to be right next to our homes. The landscape of this area has changed for the better. It's more family-friendly. You have the new school that purchased 50 acres of land directly 1,200 feet from the corner of this property. You also have the new MI Neighborhood that's being built directly across the street from this property. And then you obviously have the new baseball diamonds and splash pad that are coming to the northeast corner of I-65 and Worthville Road. Nothing that I have mentioned demonstrates that warehouses or industrial zoning.
Your time is up.
Very good. Thank you for hearing.
Before our next speaker, I appreciate all of you being here to make sure it's clear the proceedings of the council are quite a bit different than the proceedings at the plan commission. And the audience, we set aside a time for the audience to speak to the council and state your concerns. But when the actual ordinance comes up on the agenda, there will not be an opportunity for the audience to speak at that time. The only time that happens, if there's a public hearing scheduled, then there is not a public hearing scheduled for this ordinance, so then at that time, the petitioner will state their concerns and their proposal, and then the council will take the vote. So I just want to make sure everybody understood this isn't the same situation. There's no you state your side, he states his side, and then a rebuttal or any of that. Just so everybody's clear. Thank you. Let me proceed.
Thank you. My name's Nick Hunter. I live at 3114 East 700 North in Whiteland. I'll be brief, as I know others want to speak. But this proposal for rezoning to a combination of commercial and industrial, it does not even have a proposed site plan, and they talk about there's a market need, you know, what's going to build this, you know, market demand. And just based on a quick Google search between north of Worthville and south of county line, there's over 2.1 million square feet of warehouse space available for potential tenants ranging from 24,000 feet to 584,000 feet. So I don't believe that there is any need for speculative builds and rezoning this for those purposes. Additionally, on top of that, the Worthville Road land use plan specifically says that if there are any provisions or are there any conflicts with the provisions or intent of this amendment with the comprehensive plan, then basically the Worthville Road interchange plan is the government thoughtful. And I think that that's important because when this went before the ABC, I think it's important to note that the petitioner was using documents and maps that were based on the comprehensive plan itself, not be it the amendment that the Worthville Road interchange plan supersedes. And it says that if there's any conflict with the provisions or the intent, I want to point out some of the language about the intent of the Worthville Road plan. It's supposed to be the primary gateway to the city, something that is unique to Greenwood and avoid repetition of development and missed opportunities at the city's other interchanges. That's exactly what we have at the other interchanges, is a combination of an excess of of both commercial and industrial. This is supposed to be something different. The petitioner attempted to say that this is a compromise because based on what they said with the old, I call it the old comprehensive plan, that this is a mixed use. This is supposed to be commercial and industrial. That's their compromise, that this is more commercial. On the new plan, it does address that, yes, there are areas that are supposed to be retaken. But with the land in question, that's only five acres of this land is supposed to be retained. That's 3.2% of 154 acres, not 100% being commercial and industrial. So with that in mind, I'm going to be, I'm going to end my time and give someone else.
Super Great. Hi there. I am Audrey Surpitz, and I live at 6642 North 300 East. And see, I'm not going to read all of this. So in June of 2016, we, my husband and I and our family moved here to escape city life. We chose the country to avoid excessive traffic, noise, light pollution, general pollution, and crime, just to name a few. Our home is our investment. If we were to sell our home in the future, which of you are going to come and offer us full asking price, knowing that we live immediately next door to a warehouse? We're not going to get what we put into our home. It's just not going to happen. If you have driven out there all, you would know that these homes that are out there are not starter homes either. And the fact is, is that many of these homes cannot be supported by the wages a warehouse will pay the workers. And despite your insistence that the semis won't utilize certain roads, the existing warehouses have proven this to be false. They drive on all of them, tearing them up, and they are constantly getting stuck.
Amen.
They take the Whiteland exit and they drive down our road at full speed to the Amazon and FedEx and all those. You will not be able to stop the increased semi traffic additional warehouses will bring. Furthermore, there simply are not enough residents to fill the positions that they will require. The current warehouses cannot hold enough people. So what advantage is there to building more warehouses? These are our homes. Bring communities, parks, play areas, condos, whatever. The last time we were here, we were stated there warehouses will be permitted south of Worthville Road. All we ask is if you want to.
My name is Ricky D. Pike Stewart. Only up here is the previous lady calling me chicken, not coming up here. Her and I share a pretty similar experience. We bought our home in 2016. As a matter of fact, I'm glad she didn't buy ours because she looked at it. But I can assure you, today's market right now, seeing what's going on, I would never look at that house ever since Amazon made it. I'm a FedEx truck driver, and I moved out to get away from the city life. Now, if you go to the local gas station down the road, they had closed signs on the fuel pumps for them to be respectful and stay at handicap parking spots because they just run the gas station now over there. But that being said, as you can see, the roads don't support it. I am a truck driver. I take GPS. If there's an accident on the highway, I follow my GPS. I don't know where I'm going. I am a truck driver. I take GPS. If there's an accident on the highway, I follow my GPS. I don't know where I'm going. And a lot of times I know that route through there. I don't take it because it's my own neighborhood. But I live on that street and I could see multiple trucks going through there on a daily basis and nobody enforces it. I've got three little kids. I do not want to see them driving around there with all these trucks. But out the Worsfield Road Bridge is not cut out for trucks. You'll get run out of your lanes plenty of times where you have Amazon drivers racing there. You're just going to get more drivers like that, touch your people that are just in too big of a hurry to get home. They don't care about locals over there. That's all I have.
Just, uh, so you'll know there's four minutes left on the 20 minute time limit.
I'll be quick.
All right.
Thank you, guys. Hi, I'm Eric Cady, 3249 East Worsfield Road. I'm new, uh, not necessarily the side town. I grew up down near my wife's from the north side. I relocated my young family, uh, from Marion County down here. Um, and if you're familiar, hopefully you guys have driven out here where we're talking about this, uh, this going on. So I'm right on Worsfield Road. When, uh, we decided to move and like someone else stated, it's not a starter house. It's my fifth house. Um, you know, we looked at the planning for the area because it was something, you know, with the other warehouses being north. And it was pretty black and white about what the area was going to get used for. So we decided to buy, uh, you know, our home and then, um, you know, basically put in, I'm at about 23% of what we paid for it. And renovations making it better, um, you know, for us and for the neighbors and for everything else. And I'm irritated for sure that already, you know, just buying in December that I'm up here thinking about a, uh, you know, this being a thousand feet away from my three acre, you know, plot of land that is going to be difficult. I knew that it was going to get, um, you know, repurposed, but it was, it was not for this. That's what it was stated pretty black and white. I'm excited that Whiteland is building a school literally in my side yard. Uh, that, that's good news to me. It's going to slow the road down because you guys, we cannot, not you guys, that's not fair. Uh, we all cannot control, uh, the speed and traffic, the type of traffic. If you know that Griffith Road dead ends into my driveway, semis do a U turn there, just come sit out there. You'll see it every single day. That's, that, I mean, you know, we just can't control it, you know? So if I say something to them, you know, which I usually don't, but I have, it's usually a pretty correct comment back from them because they don't care about us. Nobody in this room, including you guys. So I guess I definitely oppose this very strongly and feel like it does go through. I would, I mean, quite frankly, been lied to and definitely regret relocating my family down here. So thanks, guys.
The rights, and then about two minutes.
7419 Samuel Drive, Indianapolis. I'm an individual who Mr. Kuyer mentioned. My family and I purchased a two acre lot right across the road, less than 50 feet from where this proposed development is. We had a number of conversations with neighbors about past efforts on the rezoning that were voted down and told that the city of Greenwood had given assurance that that would not take place again. We've looked at the current comprehensive map provisions that show that this land was agriculture or best developed for residential or large residential use. Nothing new indicates industrial zoning. That is why we purchased this land. We bought this land with the intention of building our dream home for our parents. Because of this rezoning effort, we can now put this dream on hold. And considering canceling these dreams, because once again, we are here fighting the same fight that has been thought to be a dead issue. Despite what the petitioner said, no amount of landscaping or trees can hide site-based warehouses and all the other things will come that, like the amount of light pollution that they will give off, excessive noise that will be produced round the clock from their operations or the increased semi-traffic on the road. Landscaping cannot provide help to negative impact that will also occur on the property values in this area. I'm now asking the council to deny this rezoning request, but it also provides long-term insurance to these residents that the city of Greenwood will not rezone this to industrial, but will keep that residential or ag use safe.
Thanks. The time limit on that topic. So I appreciate you all coming. Is there anyone else here tonight that would wish to speak to a different topic on the council's agenda tonight?
Now, can we have everybody stand up who didn't get a turn to speak?
Yeah, if you're here tonight and are opposed to this ordinance, please stand. All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate you coming up for you. All right. Anyone else wish to address the councils this time? In the moving on, ordinance is a resolution with notice of intent to consider ordinance number 2215.
In accordance to a methodic official zoning map, the doctor has referenced unified development ordinance number 2029, proposed rezoning of approximately 154.4 acres located at the southeast corner of Worsfield Road and Collins Road. JR and Associates LP and Ruth Felsley Properties sponsored by Dave's.
All right, Mr. Prime. Uh, before you speak, do you have a motion? Mostly Mr. Hopper's second.
Second.
Second, Ms. Gibson. Right, Mr. Prime.
Okay, correct, Eric Prime, baby law firm. We have the Kelsey family in Duke Realty. Uh, we're here this evening about a potential rezoning of 154.4 acres on the south side of Worsfield Road. Current is a tag and we're seeking to change that zone classification to mixed use, the commercial medium and industrial large. The ground that we're here about this evening, uh, sits just south of Worsfield Road, just east of the, uh, I 65 interchange. It's four parcels, uh, that basically form a square. On this map, it's bracketed by, uh, the Worsfield Road, 750 North and then Pushville Road. Uh, under that, so if you see that square, that's the area we're talking about. And actually also forms the far southeast corner of the city. Uh, your city limits run along where it says Pushville Road on the south side of this property and then turn north of Five Points to Worsfield. So that is the, the far southeast corner of the city. Anything to the east of there is in the county. Anything to the south of there is in the county. And this map will just zero you in a little closer. Uh, the parcels with the red dots, if you can see those, those are the, the pieces that we're talking about here. Uh, the Kelsey family actually owns more than these pieces and some of the earlier iterations of projects that had come through actually included much more acres. So this 154 acres is a smaller project, a smaller footprint than some of the predecessor efforts. Uh, the Kelseys dairy operations were just south. It's just off this map, uh, which they unfortunately had to close. Uh, a few years ago, so that actually increased their interest in remarketing this ground. Um, it's uniquely situated, right? Real estate's all about, you know, location. And here we have a piece that is immediately adjacent to the, the interstate, easy access on and off. Uh, and some of the uses there are the people that we got repeated offers for were industrial and, uh, heavier use folks. And I told the Kelseys, you know, look, it's not worth putting this ground under contract if it's just solely industrial because the city had staked out that position. They did not want industrial south of Worsfield Road. But a few things have changed since that, uh, those statements were made. One, uh, just about all of the usable ground north of Worsfield has been either developed or it's under contract. So we're limited on what space is available for industrial development. Secondly, we had a pandemic that substantially changed people's buying habits. And a lot of those folks who may be against this, I'm sure also buy a lot of things online. And that, uh, has created a need for a lot of these types of projects. And that market is still hot. Duke Realty as of, uh, the end of May was 100% leased. I know the one speaker said there was, there was, uh, leased space available, uh, north of here, but at least the pieces that Duke does, and they're all around the donut, um, they were 100% leased. And, and so if they know that there's a need, that's why they're here. That's why they're seeking, uh, to develop this. Uh, the other thing that changed since those statements were made about no development south of Worsfield is this. The blue area is the county's east side tip. The parcel just oriented again, and we're here about the seating. You can see the, the upper northwest corner of the parcel we're here about is in paint. And it is actually that, that piece, that one piece is in your, uh, pink tip district. Uh, the remainder of the ground that's not in any tip at this point. But as you can see, uh, the city is really hemmed in from the side in terms of future developable ground. And so when Duke came to the Kelseys with this plan that was a mix of commercial and industrial, it actually got our attention because they were taking an intentional approach to understanding that there were people residing to the east. And how could they set this up with the least impact on those folks? And the way they're going to do that is by buffering, uh, on the west, the east and the north of this property. So the commercial corridor will be right on the front edge of Worsfield. Any industrial or, uh, manufacturing uses will be in behind. And the only access in or out of this area will be off of 250. Uh, this is showing one entrance, but there will actually be two per, uh, the city's ordinance. Um, and all of the traffic entering the industrial zone here will come in off of 250 where there's already a stoplight at that 250 Collins, uh, intersection. So Five Points Road and the, and the houses and the folks to the east will be buffered by retention ponds, by a berm and, uh, by no access whatsoever, uh, from this, uh, project onto Five Points. Nothing from the commercial, nothing from the industrial. It all comes in on 250. And so we believe with that kind of, that intentional planning, uh, and given the squeeze from the county that this is, uh, an area that is developable as industrial and commercial mix and can be done in a way that minimizes the impact on the folks living nearby. It just, uh, in terms of actual, you know, things developing the other way. Um, this is an older area on the left is the, uh, commercial area off of, uh, Main Street. And on the right is, uh, homecoming. And that actually came in after the industrial was there. So industrial doesn't necessarily spell. Um, anyway, and that, it, it just shows that, uh, they can be compatible uses if they're going in a, in a proper way in terms of buffer. That's all I have.
All right. Any questions, Mr. Prime?
I have one question. Uh, I know Mr. Gooden said, uh, that he had reached out. Are you guys reached out to them as a conversation? Uh, what was discussed and how did that go?
They were fairly agreed. We tried to reach out a second time and had a larger meeting. Uh, we did speak just with Randy early in the process. Um, I think that was back when he was semi supportive of the, of the deal. And so that discussion didn't go into depth or detail. And then we were not able to get, um, once his position changed and the other folks came aboard. So, yeah, nothing was substantive.
How are you going about trying to arrange those meetings?
Uh, just email contact with Mr. Prime. I didn't have anybody else's contact information, but when he reached out to us, we had to send mailers out to all of the affected property owners. So they had my contact information, but I didn't have theirs necessarily.
Wyatt, please.
Eric, you represented the Kelseys for a while. Any homeowners ever offered to buy this site?
All right. Any other questions, Eric? All right, thank you. Any discussion on the council? Oh, I'm sorry. We're in here.
We gave the plan to perfect. Uh, the vote did go to planning mission for its public hearing. At that hearing, uh, what's being passed around is the memorandum that has the recommendations unfavorable. If you choose to be favorable though, I would suggest that you take it to consideration of the staff report that is attached to that handout. That includes commitments that planning staff, uh, and engineering staff have worked on to provide a, a more conducive site to the properties. We kept the, the neighbors in mind as we did this to just highlight a few areas. Uh, we do provide, I have a commitment for a six foot berm. We have lighting that steps down within 300 feet of the residential properties. Uh, we also have some commitments in there regarding, uh, traffic concerns and, uh, infrastructure improvements. One of the commitments that we've added is no curb cuts along Five Points Road. That is the road, uh, to the east. Uh, that is one we have on there, uh, with surrounding, uh, properties in mind. So I do have a, a short, uh, presentation, uh, not quite as artistically drawn as Mr. Prime's. So this again is just the concept plan that, uh, Eric Prime and his team works with planning staff to design in a way that would be more convenient to the neighbors, uh, to the east that are outside of the city limits. Uh, you have the detention areas along that border as well as the drone. And then this is the tip district map. My map is done a little differently, Eric, but you can see the proposed zone map change. This is, uh, two different zones we have here. It is a commercial zone along, uh, Frontage Road of Worsfield. And then behind the commercial, uh, behind that area will be industrial, um, zoning. And right here to the south, you have the tip district from the county. Tip districts are not typically, uh, intended for residential uses as, as we all know. And then we do have Greenwood's tip district as well. With the staff report, I do have a couple revisions that I would like to, uh, bring to your attention in case you do decide to, uh, be favorable of the rezon with the staff conditions. Uh, one is we are not having a reconstructed Five Point Road in our commitments. Uh, that is not a road that they have any curb cut access to. Uh, so we did not feel that that would be necessary. And then the other is, uh, Pushville Road. Right now, the Kelsey farm has a private gravel road that they maintain there. On the map, it does say Pushville. Uh, we're asking for a 35 feet of half road right away. Uh, the rest of that road would come if the county developed a portion to the south of it and so decided to have a road there. And the last commitment change would be, uh, the date from seven months to 12 months. Uh, for should the developer not close on the purchase of the property, uh, within that period of time, uh, we, city of Greenwood may have the option to rezon it back to its original zoning.
Right.
Do you just? Yeah, do you know, I'll jump your head with the tallest berm we have in Greenwood is.
I am not aware of the tallest berm. I would assume that, uh, the FedEx berm, uh, may be up there with some of the taller berms. Uh, the plans note that it is a six foot berm, uh, but upon looking, uh, further at their elevations at the contour lines of their plans, it really is going up about, uh, 10 feet there, sloping back down and then coming up, uh, with a kind of a second hill. Uh, but that would be, um, their landscaping berm was six feet, but it is on a hill. So. So it would be closer to 10 feet.
Would you take the slide back that has the amendments you'd like to see made to the commitments? Are those in this packet you gave us?
They are not in that packet. The amendments that I have made are for number five E, Five Points Road, number five F, Bushville Road, and number 10.
All right. Eric, can I push it up to an eight-foot berm on top of this hill so you really can see anything? I don't think when I drive by 65 and I'm on, looking, usually I'm headed south to the baseball. As I'm looking out east, I have a FedEx facility. I can barely see the top of the building, it's actually up high. So I don't know how big that one is, I assume it's eight, 10 feet probably.
I live a mile south of the Inglewood.
I'm sorry. Yes, A G.
David, can I make a mention? I was out there today and looking at that. And I think that berm should be at least 10 foot high. And there's the six-foot elevation out there at FedEx. It's raised and then it tapers off and then it goes up again. And there's peaks and valleys, so it's not just a straight hill.
But it sounds like if we make, if we make the berm eight foot tall, which is in addition to the hill that it's on, so. All right. And this is going to be, if we put an eight-foot berm, like how big is the hill that we're putting this berm on?
I really am not sure if there is a hill there. The FedEx one was.
The hill was at FedEx.
I'm okay with like a 10 or 12 foot something where you can.
I think 10 would be adequate, but I think that would give a good buffer.
We need to consider the new Skeneau buildings right there on Allen Road. Those, we did do a commitment of a 12-foot berm. But if you've been out there and look at it, guess what? You can see the building peekabooing over the top. 12-foot berm does nothing but put a big hill in the middle of it. It doesn't block the traffic. Yeah, it's my district. I've been out there numerous times. I've seen that project. I've been out there homecoming. A 12-foot berm does nothing but cover the bottom half of the doors and windows. You still see a giant warehouse.
What I propose is an amendment incorporating the staff's recommendations plus the changes that Ms. Nelson's made here. And a 12-foot berm would be, I guess, what I would say would be by amendment to try to make it better.
We have a motion with Mr. Hopper to incorporate the staff's recommendations and the amendments to date, what to make to the commitments, and to increase the berm along Five Points Road to 12 feet. Is that correct?
Yes.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Lexi. Any discussion on the amendment to ordinance 2215? Roll call on the amendment ordinance 2215.
Campbell.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Gibson.
Aye.
Hill. Hopper.
Aye.
Lexi.
Aye.
Philton.
Aye.
Aye.
Ordinance 2215 is amended under vote of eight to zero. Any further discussion with ordinance 2215 as amended?
I think the final comment I would like to say is I echo every commitment that was said here tonight was that I thought we were done at Cranmore, that we were done doing industrial south of Cranmore. And I remember that being told to me my first year on council. So I would like to see that commitment split too.
I also agree with the commentators that have said comprehensive plan should be respected. Comprehensive plan is put in place all over the state of Indiana so that real estate investors can rely upon them when they invest, whether it be a home, a business, or an industrial property. Those investors look at comprehensive plans that are supposed to have some degree of certainty that they can rely upon and how they will use in the future. If we as a council don't uphold our comprehensive plan, we're under line of investment agreement.
Any further discussion on the council?
Yes, I was one of the people that said I just wanted to see warehouses along Worceville Road. And the reason for that is I just feel like the initial comprehensive plan on Worceville Road that was put out, it showed commercial development and they were leaning towards restaurants or dry cleaners or things of that nature, nothing like a service station or anything. But now that the county has established that tip, that that's right up to that area, a tip isn't established for residential use, it's established for commercial. So I think this is another one of those times that periodically there are modifications and changes made. And so that's my reason for being willing to support it is that if the county has put that tip district there, it's for commercial. It's not for residential use.
All right. Any further discussion on the council?
Mr. President, I will reiterate everything I've said. I agree with Mr. Lexi and Mr. Williams. You know, two years ago when we were all campaigning, we're talking about a gateway to the city, which was mentioned. This isn't a gateway. This is an extension of Main Street. When I saw this project that had commercial, I was, my eyebrows lit up. I said, okay, something different than what we have. And then with it comes warehouses. I think this is a matter of accountability by the city. You know, we've told ourselves, we've told constituents, we've told homeowners that we're not going to build anything south of Worceville. And as somebody that's building a house right now, if somebody wanted to stake a warehouse in an undeveloped land that hasn't been developed for decades, I can tell you how I would feel. And I know, I mean, I sympathize that we even have to meet about this again. So that's my stance on this.
Any discussion? Seeing none, then roll call ordinance 2215.
Foster.
Aye.
Gibson.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
Hopper.
Aye.
Lexi.
Aye.
Philton.
Nay.
Williams.
Nay.
And Campbell.
All right. It's a four to four vote ordinance 2215 fails to pass on a vote of four to four. That's it on that ordinance. Ordinance number 2216.
An ordinance to amend the official zoning map adopted by reference to unified development ordinance number 2029. Proposed free zoning for approximately 1.074 acres located at 195 North Emerson Avenue, 195 South Emerson LLC property sponsored by Bates &amp; Gibson.
Motion of Mr. Hopper, second.
Second.
Second of Mr. Foster. Any discussion? Ordinance 2216, or you want to make a presentation?
I do not have a presentation for this one, but I'm here for any questions you might have.
All right. Any questions for Mr. Nelson, the board here? All right. Any discussion on the council ordinance 2216? Hearing none, then roll call ordinance 2216.
Gibson. Hill. Hopper.
Aye.
Lexi.
Aye.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Aye.
Ordinance 2216 passes on a vote of eight to zero. First reading, ordinance 2212.
An ordinance amending the 2022 salary ordinance, common council ordinance number 21317, to amend positions of community development purposes sponsored by Bates &amp; Gibson.
No motion? Motion of Ms. Gibson, second, of Mr. Hopper. Any discussion? Hearing none, then roll call ordinance 2212, first reading.
Hill. Hopper.
Aye.
Lexi.
Aye.
Philton.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Aye.
Ordinance 2212 passes, first reading eight to zero. Ordinance 2214.
An ordinance providing for additional appropriations from the aviation fund and budget classification 431, 152,211, and from the community capital development fund to budget classification 431, 371,500, sponsored by Bates &amp; Gibson.
Have a motion? Motion of Ms. Gibson, second, second of Mr. Lexi. This is scheduled for a public hearing. Open it up for a public hearing. If you wish to speak for or against ordinance 2214, please step to the podium, state your name and address for the record. All right. Seeing none, then close the public hearing. Any discussion on the council? Hearing none, then we'll do roll call ordinance 2214, first reading.
Hopper.
Aye.
Lexi.
Aye.
Philton.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Gibson.
Aye.
And Philton.
Ordinance 2214 passes, first reading eight to zero. Resolution 2210.
A resolution of the Greenwood Common Council, we have a non-compliant and very good holditz LLC regarding the failure to timely file as application for deduction from assessed valuation of structures, economic revitalization areas, ERA, sponsored by Gibson.
No motion?
So, Eric.
Motion of Ms. Gibson, second. Second of Mr. Hopper. Any discussion on the council? Oh, yeah. We are scheduled for a public hearing. Open it up for a public hearing. If you wish to speak for or against. Resolution 2210, please step to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Close the public hearing. Now, any discussion on the council? Anything else? All right, roll call, resolution 2210, first reading.
Lexi.
Aye.
Philton.
Nay.
Williams.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Gibson.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
And Hopper.
Aye.
Resolution 2210 passes, first reading seven to one. There are none of the second reading, new business introduction to the ordinance is resolutions, resolution 2212.
A resolution of the common council of the city of Greenwood, Louisiana, approving issuance of the city's stormwater district revenue bonds and execution thereof, sponsored by Bates &amp; Gibson.
All right. Good evening, great ride, city controller. This would be a bond issue. It's approximately $3.9 million to fund the construction and inspection of the Honey Creek Bridge project. It will occur in conjunction with Worceville Road section two to minimize the closure time in that area. This bond will replace one that Stormwater Department paid off in 2020. It is contemplated in their rates. And so the bond will be structured basically to fit that timeline so that there's no change to the rates as well.
Any questions for Mr. Ryan?
I guess the only question I would have, any hurry to put this, so we can get a. It's kind of difficult, the whole process, notifications and public hearings and all that. The Stormwater Board is in association again with three quarter points and house maintenance money. This keeps us on schedule.
All right, thank you. Resolution 2213.
A resolution declaring certain areas within the city of Greenwood an economic revitalization area and qualifying certain real property improvements for tax abatement. Instead of the time and place for a public hearing, Becknell Industrial, Worceville Road, building one, sponsored by Campbell and Hopper.
Let's do 2214.
A resolution declaring certain areas within the city of Greenwood an economic revitalization area and qualifying certain real property improvements for tax abatement and setting time and place for a public hearing, Becknell Industrial, Worceville Road, building two, sponsored by Campbell and Hopper.
All right. Mr. Sherman, would you like to address both of these?
Sure. Thanks.
Actually, Sherman, consequently, CPAs here for Becknell Industrial, these are two similar buildings or identical buildings. The area is just to the east of Anderson House, East of railroad tracks. It's a industrial area, it's been there for quite some time. Folks who are developing this, there'll be two buildings, 100,000 each, which is a good building for some of our manufacturing. The two, but Becknell's been a good developer for us in our community. They built the buildings that Milwaukee Tool was in. So that's the kind of development they do. And here to answer any questions, they'll be similar tracks in size.
Any questions? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Resolution 2215.
A resolution of Greenwood Common Council, terminating property tax abatement for personal property improvements, added supply chain, sponsored by Gibson.
I believe we have, is there anyone here in the audience or you online wishing to address this? Is there anyone wishing to speak to this?
Mitchell Campbell, Councilman Campbell, this is Adam.
Yes.
I believe that, yeah, I believe, I believe tonight there's no discussion.
Okay, all right. Thank you. All right. Moving on, miscellaneous business. First item is, this is the second opportunity we set aside for members of the audience to address the council this time concerning items that are not on the agenda. So if you wish to speak to the council, this is your opportunity. Step to the podium, state your name and address for the record.
Hi, Jim Harries, if you'd like, this is Free Book and Drive. And the question is redistricting, in order of less than a year away from our next election. And are we going to redistrict our council seats? Something that people need to know so they can run or people not to run? And is the council making any effort to redistrict?
All right, thank you. Anyone else wishing to address the council at this time? Seeing miscellaneous business from the council. All of you received a copy of a motion that I'm requesting that we pass tonight. The motion reads, I move to approve a professional services agreement with Kroger, Gattis, and Regus LLP for legal services regarding the redistricting project in an amount not to exceed $50,000 with terms and conditions determined by the legal department to authorize the president to sign the agreement on the common council. I have a motion of Mr. Hopper. That's second by Ms. Gibson. Any discussion on the council? I think I sent all of you a letter of explanation for why we're doing this. And this is the same firm that the county used to draw their redistricting maps. And I believe it's the same for the mayor, Franklin, told me it's the same firm they're using as well, so.
So are we, are we as the council, the client, who's the city, the client?
This is a council.
Responsibility.
Responsibility, yes. So the. Simply, and there will be a resolution that comes with more detail, but this is just to get the process started so I can sign the letter immediately. All right, any, say, all in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed? Like some? Thank you very much. Passes on a unanimous vote of eight to zero. Most of our Mr. Hopper's second, I missed. Most of our Mr. Hopper's second, my Mr. Lexi, but all in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed. Passage unanimous.
Fine Anderson has her automation.
Mr. Mr. Hopper, second, and Mr. Lexi, all in favor say aye. Aye.
Fine Anderson has her protect AG real property.
Most of Mr. Hopper's second, and Mr. Lexi, all in favor say aye. Aye, passage unanimous. Most of Mr. Hopper's second, and Mr. Lexi, all in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed. Passage unanimous. Most of Mr. Hopper's second, and Mr. Lexi, all in favor say aye. Aye, passage unanimous. Most of Mr. Hopper's second, and Mr. Lexi, all in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed, passage unanimous. Most of Mr. Hopper's second, and Mr. Lexi, all in favor say aye. Aye, passage unanimous. Who, which one? Number eight. Okay.
So.
Okay, motion of Mr. Hopper's second, and Mr. Lexi, all in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed, passage unanimous.
I, CPA, private associates, real property being substantial.
Most of Mr. Hopper's second, and Mr. Lexi, all in favor say aye. Aye, passage unanimous. Most of Mr. Hopper's second, and Mr. Lexi, all in favor say aye. Aye, passage unanimous. Any other miscellaneous business for the council? Miscellaneous business corporation council. Controller, Mr. Mayor. Hard turn, thank you everyone.